Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Wednesday, March 2, 2016. If you would join us, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Clint?
Here.
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Demmer?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Discussion or changes? I would suggest that item two, we might be a little bit in flux. We don't know when Senator Abler and Representative Scott are going to be here, so we'll just put them into the agenda whenever they show up. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. It looks like we have a presentation by Family Promise first on our agenda.
How do you like me to go?
Right to the podium there, sir.
Thanks.
Go ahead, state your name and tell us.
My name is David Frye. I'm the new executive director at Family Promise. I'm here with Sue Basden, who is one of our board members as well. I'd like to start with a little bit of a story about someone who came to our program, two women who came to our program. When Sherri came to Family Promise, it was a turning point in her long and difficult journey. She and her teenage daughter had both spent time in the hospital for health issues. Her marriage had fallen apart, and they had run out of places to turn. "It was an island in the storm" for us, Sherri told us. Family Promise helped her navigate the county programs and services that could help them as they got back on their feet. They made friends, got jobs, and they found an apartment. Sherri and her daughter continue to be involved with Family Promise, but now as day center weekend volunteers, because they want to help give back to families that find themselves in similar positions to where they were just a year ago. Family Promise in Anoka County is a short-term program for families experiencing homelessness here in Anoka County. Guests of Family Promise receive robust case management at our day center in Ramsey, and guests of the program receive overnight shelter and three meals a day through a network of volunteers and eighteen partner congregations throughout Anoka County. These local congregations take turns opening their facilities for a week at a time to house the guests for the evening and overnight hours, and each morning, the guests are transported to our Ramsey Day Center where they can meet transportation to their jobs or school and where they can access computers and Internet, storage, showers, laundry, case management services, transportation assistance, all free of charge to the guests. In 2015, twenty-three families comprised a total of seventy individuals who were served by the Family Promise program throughout the year. Fourteen of those were people who were staying in Coon Rapids at the time that they entered the program. Over five hundred volunteers provided over twenty-six hundred bed nights and over eight thousand meals to the Family Promise program last year. All of this was accomplished for a total program cost in 2015 of under $156,000. In the coming year, we'll be implementing additional benefits to our guests, a new training program, partnering a guest with a volunteer to work through computer-based courses that focus on the job search, financial management, and parenting skills, and that will be rolled out later this month. We expect this program to increase positive outcomes for the families and to give additional tools to them to help prevent them from falling back into the situations that caused the housing instability in the first place. Family Promise does not receive state or federal money for our operations. We rely heavily on volunteers to keep our costs down and efficiently leverage what we do receive. An annually budgeted grant from the city of Coon Rapids would allow us to continue to diversify our funding sources and to ensure that we have stable funding structure to continue serving families experiencing homelessness well into the future. We would ask that you would consider that as an option as you're preparing the budget, and I can answer any questions if you would like.
I don't need questions. No? I was writing so feverishly, I thought it's gonna look like I'm not paying attention to you, but I was writing everything down, and I thought, oh, just stop and listen. I can come back and listen to the tape.
I can give you a copy if you'd like as well.
No, it's excellent work. I mean, it's to care for that many families, and I know that our own parish Epiphany is involved in the hosting there, and it's a big deal, so.
It's an exciting thing, and we actually had one of our more exciting moments last week, the first time that a baby was born to one of the guests in our program. She went into labor at the day center, and I got to take her to the hospital, so.
That would be exciting.
All in a day's work, I suppose.
So where's the day center in Ramsey?
It is on the campus of Lord of Life Church on Northern Boulevard, just barely into Ramsey.
Yep, I know where it is as well, okay. Counselor Clint?
I know, I'm really familiar with this too, throughout church and volunteering, but I commend you. I think it's just one of our better programs that we have in the area. It really is one of the only programs that helps homeless children. You know, we have for older kids and adults, but this, it really does help families with young children, so it is, it's a really good program.
We are the only one in Anoka County that serves a family unit.
And then, I almost hate to ask this, but are you receiving annual grants from other communities that you serve?
Yes, we get from Anoka and...
Andover and Blaine.
Andover and Blaine, and Anoka County as well.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Reserving item two on the agenda, we'll move to item three to approve the minutes of the February 16th council meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Geisler?
We need to look at making sure that it's amended to add the TBD values that are in our updated Page Nine.
Okay. So motioner and seconder, were we including the amended Page Nine numbers?
Yes.
Yes, you were, of course. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or corrections? All in favor, I'm sorry. Yeah, all in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Next is our consent agenda, and the first item on our agenda, and I'm embarrassed to say I had to look and see where Woodview Park was. I thought, I've never heard of Woodview Park, and I realized it's that one right off of all of Northdale. I've always known where that park is. It's a beautiful little park nestled up to the back of the homes behind the church. Just never knew what it was called. So the first item on our agenda is to approve expenditures for the Woodview Park upgrade, and that will be for playground equipment, masonry columns, and the labor to install everything from the Minnesota-Wisconsin playground, a total of $140,080. Item five is to approve the agreement for the online bill pay for utility billing, and folks have been able to pay online for the water billing, but this will enhance the experience a little bit. They'll be able to access their bills online, make one-time or reoccurring payments with a credit card or check, pay via email, phone, or text, and the city will also continue to allow customers to use ACH directly with utility billing personnel. Additionally, they can continue to use their bank bill pay option through their financial institutions. And the one change that people are going to notice is because the city paid roughly $26,000 in credit card fees last year, and now if you use a credit card, it will include a convenience fee of $295 for payments up to $200. Accurate?
That's accurate in the memo, but we just revised that. We got it revised, so it's up to $300. So we got that increased.
Okay.
So it's the same fee for up to $300.
Okay.
Is there a larger fee for more than that?
Yes. I don't know if I'm gonna remember what it is, but I do have Bridget with me tonight, who is a utility billing clerk, and she has all the details if we want to get into it a little bit heavier.
I realize I'm doing badly. It says the average utility bill per quarter is about $100. That's not me.
It's always gotta be above.
Was there any clarifications, Bridget, as far as higher amount, or?
Unfortunately, the limit is 300. If you want to make a payment of more than $300, you'd have to submit two separate payments and pay two separate fees.
Okay, all right. So there would be two separate fees if it's over $300. Okay, thank you. Item six on the agenda is to approve the waiver of the carnival license fees for the 2016 Spring Fest celebration, and that will be coming up at Epiphany on May 20th and 21st, 2016. Item seven is to adopt Resolution 16-34, an agreement for Minnesota government access. This is through the Minnesota judicial branch has developed a new system, the Minnesota Government Access for Government Agencies, including the City Attorney's Office and Police Department. This will provide the City Attorney's Office and the Police Department access to appropriate electronic court records and documents stored in the Minnesota Court Information System. So this will be authorizing the City Attorney and Police Chief, or their designee, the authority to enter into a master subscriber's agreements with the state of Minnesota for access to the MGA system. Your Honor. Counselor Manning?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Manning and a second by Demmer to approve the consent agenda. Was there a comment or question or something?
I was seconding it, but he beat me.
Oh, all right. I just heard that extra little voice. All right, thank you. Any other discussion or, all right, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. The next thing would be public hearings, bid openings, and contract awards. Moves us up to old business. Number eight, consider adoption of Ordinance 2159, an ordinance adding requirements for micro distilleries, brew pubs, and brewer taprooms. And I must say, this was a very interesting read to learn the difference between those things, because I've never really known what that was. As discussed at the introduction of this ordinance at the February 16th council meeting, it is necessary to make amendments to Chapter 5-200, the city's alcoholic beverage licensing code, to allow for micro distilleries, brew pubs, and brewer taprooms. This ordinance also includes a revision to Sunday sales to allow for the recently amended state law that allows Sunday on-sale license holders to begin serving at 8:00 a.m., and the city's code currently requires that sales start at 10:00 a.m. So this would be amending that. Any presentations, or council need anything, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2159 for micro distilleries, brew pubs, and brewer taprooms, and authorize a summary publication.
Motion by Geisler, second by Clint. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. I have all kinds of things underlined, but anything that I didn't like. Item nine, consider adoption of Ordinance 2160, an ordinance amending city code 5-900 tobacco. So as you mentioned earlier, Counselor Demmer, we've got alcohol, tobacco, and then, but no firearms tonight. All right. Is there a summary of this? We had a workshop on this earlier. An ordinance was introduced at the December 1st council meeting that included the electronic delivery device additions to the city code and the new manager language, the section that would have prohibited smoking indoors at retail tobacco establishments, has been removed due to the fact that it had been a number of months between the work session, discussion, and the introduction of the ordinance. Staff was asked to notify tobacco license holders prior to the adoption. Staff did send notice to all tobacco license holders indicating that this ordinance would be considered for adoption by the council at the March 2nd city council meeting. Is there anybody here this evening because of that? All right. Does anybody here this evening because of the tobacco ordinance? Are you? Do you have specific issues with the way this is written, or are you just curious? Is there anything you'd like to address? Okay. All right. Because it seemed like the most contentious thing at the workshop was not allowing any smoking indoors, because apparently those little vapor things don't work, and they need to be able to test them inside or test the different vapes, so that's been eliminated so that the ordinance will not prohibit smoking indoors at the retail establishments.
No.
Is that right? Counselor Clint? Clint?
I thought that, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers?
Yes.
The ordinance that was presented to you had a section back in March 2015 had a section that would have prohibited smoking, vaping, whatever you want to call it, in tobacco retail establishments.
Right.
That's the section that was removed.
Right.
There was never a consideration or a proposal at that time or now regarding vaping in other types of retail.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Only tobacco.
I'm sorry, right, that's what I meant.
Only tobacco stores.
Where they're specifically selling those and servicing those items, that's specifically those stores.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Your Honor?
Counselor Clint?
But isn't it more like there's some places that have rooms where you can do this? It's not like if you're gonna go up and buy, try different kinds of tobacco.
Like a vaping lounge.
Like at the counter, you could, it is?
We didn't, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Clint, we did not address that with this ordinance.
I didn't know you could talk.
Counselor Demmer?
So what I remember, looking through it again the other day, is that what this really does is it makes e-cigarettes equivalent to cigarettes. So just like you could have a tobacco store where you could do cigarette testing, smoking, smoking lounges, whatever, you can also have that for e-cigarettes. We didn't eliminate it for a store that is specifically for that purpose, but for everything else, sales to minors, all that stuff, we've changed the wording to make it clear that electronic cigarettes are the same. The two major differences with this one is, in addition to the e-cigarettes, we also put in the language that tobacco products that are approved specifically for cessation, such as patches, are not under the same rules, so we're excluding those, but that e-cigarettes are the same as cigarettes for all of our rules. I think that was the best summary I had.
As long as everybody's nodding, that was an excellent summary.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Geisler?
The question that I had was that I thought when we looked at the ordinance that we were clear that, okay, yeah, it was okay to use these products in tobacco retail that were specific vaping lounges, but I thought when I was reading it now, again, it was like, oh, any establishment that even sells, so gas stations, supermarkets, all of those kinds of things, you could still use these products in, which I didn't think is what we wanted, and I need a clarification of, I thought we were allowing them only in tobacco retail that were vaping lounges, but looking at it now, it's like, I can use it anywhere. That, so if I have a restaurant that has, sells tobacco, you can use it there. I'm not sure if I like that.
Mr. Brody?
Your Honor, Councilmember Geisler, I mean, current state law doesn't prohibit the use of e-cigarettes in public places. They're not included in the general smoking ban, so at this point, you can, unless it's up to, I think, individual establishments of whether they want to ban the use. So even if a particular place or a particular public place, such as a restaurant, doesn't sell the product, you can still likely smoke your e-cigarette indoors there. It would be up to the individual property owner, so we're not changing anything there. That was the state law and the ordinance before we enacted this, or if we do enact this, and it would stay the same after that. So we were looking at this, initially was specifically banning them in those sort of solely tobacco shops where you would go in and sample the product. Council gave direction that that wasn't the direction they wanted to go, so we removed that, and like I said, as Councilmember Demmer indicated, it's just simply adding this to the list of those products that need to get a license, like tobacco. But again, they're not banned in public places now by the state law, nor will they be banned by this ordinance, and that wasn't the intended originally anyways.
Mr. Mayor? So a question, so if the state law ever would change to ban those kinds of things as, or consider them tobacco, would our ordinance have to be changed?
No.
Would we be covered?
We'd be covered under that, and certainly cities, if down the road we wanted to explore our own ban of that kind of thing, that certainly is an option to the city.
Okay.
I know other cities may, but like I said, that hasn't been where we've wanted to be at this point.
Okay. I understand no better. Thank you.
Any other discussion? And do we have a motion and a second on this?
No.
No, all right, Counselor.
I will move to adopt Ordinance 2160, an ordinance amending city code 5-900 tobacco and authorize summary publication.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Manning. Any other discussion? Counselor Demmer?
So I did look on clinicaltrials.gov, and there are 101 electronic cigarette studies going on right now, ranging from, does it work as cessation, to what happens to your lungs, and everything in between. Nearly all should be published in the next few years, but almost none of them are published yet. I think the safest and most prudent thing to do is to treat them like cigarettes in the meantime and let the data come, and then I would hope that we would reconsider and change our minds based on if the data came one way or another. If it came back that everything's healthy and great, then maybe we'd go one way. If it came back that they're really dangerous, we'd go another, and if it came back they're about equal, we'd stay the same, so. It's going on record saying this doesn't have to be this way forever.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item 10 is to consider applicant request for code amendment to allow boat and motor repair in Port Campus Square. Mr. Harlecker, do you want to lay this out, or?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember, I'd like to give kind of a brief introduction here. The proposed ordinance amendment is a result of a code enforcement action late last summer, property at 2841 Coon Rapids Boulevard. There's currently automobile repair business in that building that was granted a conditional use permit back in 1987. However, there was also a boat and motor repair business that was operating out of that same building. Whereas the automobile repair business was granted the conditional use permit, and they're operating under that conditional use permit, automobile, or excuse me, boat and motor repair is not an allowed use, and it wasn't an illegal use on the property. Property owner was notified by mail of the situation, and he asked what could he do in order to rectify the situation, and he was told I would have to submit an ordinance amendment to change the city code to allow boat and motor repair in the Port Campus Square district, which is what he does, and that's what the council is considering tonight. Planning Commission reviewed this back in January and again in February. They looked at the intent of the port districts, the goals and objectives of the Boulevard Framework Plan, the Coon Rapids Boulevard Overlay District, the Port Campus Square Master Plan, as well as the allowed uses in the port. After looking at those, excuse me, the intent and the goals and objectives of those items, they found that the proposed use is not consistent with those documents, and recommended denial of the proposed amendment to allow boat and motor repair as a permitted use in Port Campus Square based on the following. The current intent of the River Rapids Overlay District and for Port Campus Square is to promote compact vigorous development that is supportive of higher density residential, which would not include boat repair and storage business. The current allowed use in Port Campus Square are inconsistent with the proposed change, and third, Port Campus Square Master Plan in its current form is not compatible with the proposed change. And they voted four to zero to recommend denial of the proposed amendment. They did have quite a bit of discussion on this item. There was discussion as to whether boat and motor repair was a regional or local use, and if the associated outdoor motor storage should be considered as a separate use, or more of an ancillary use to the boat and motor repair business. And with that, Planning Commission did recommend denial of the proposed ordinance amendment.
Counselor Manning?
If we deny the request, how long do they have to find another place, and how long does the building, the owner of the building have to re-rent it?
Mr. Brody?
Well, I mean, if there is no ordinance, I mean, technically, they're in violation of it now. I would presume that staff would be willing to give them a reasonable amount of time. I'm not sure what that would be, but to allow for that before, you know, for their code enforcement activity was taken. But as they stand now, they're operating it illegally. They weren't allowed in the first place, so that's, they would continue with that status. Again, I would presume that us as a staff would...
How would they be able to do this without knowledge from Coon Rapids?
Again, we don't generally grant general business licenses to businesses, so they simply came in, went into business, and I think Mr. Harlecker and that department could speak more to it as how we came across them originally, but it looks like it was about a year ago, and so, or in August, so six months ago, and that's kind of where we're at today.
Oh, if, just one more thing. If we do do this, it seems like it would be fair to at least allow them enough time so they don't lose money. We're not really here to hurt people, and they've been running there for a while now, and it would seem to me like we would at least allow enough time so that, you know, they could find another spot, and they could have a reasonable amount of time to re-lease the area to somebody else. That's my opinion.
Counselor Clint?
I'm probably one of the people who called the most to complain about this, and it's probably my complaint that started the whole court enforcement, because I drive by this all the time, and quite frankly, it's a complete eyesore, I think, to the Boulevard. I know that we've, when we first started talking to them, it was an issue of, you know, not storing the boats there, and I think when the business started, it wasn't such a problem. They used more of the indoor space, but now it's just, it's just really an eyesore to drive by. All these boats are out there, and I just think it, as Mr. Harlecker said, it goes against what we had planned for the whole Boulevard Framework and what we want for the area, and I'm ready right now, and I'm going to urge everyone to just deny this, because I just don't see any good coming from it.
Your Honor. Counselor Wells?
Excuse me. I don't have any problem denying the permanent change, but I agree with Councilmember Manning. I drive by there 10 times a week, and it's been a while that it's been there. I guess I can't say the number of years, but certainly it's been there a while, and I guess I would certainly like the person to be able to, spring is the time when boats get out, and most people get their boats by May and stuff, and at least give them several months to get through that process. I think it's been there this long. Like I say, I don't want to change the ordinance, but I want to have some sympathy for somebody that's been doing business here for several years and give them a chance to at least get through the busy season.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Johnson?
I come at this from kind of a historical perspective, and I understand the reasons for the port and the reasons for the zoning requirements, but it wasn't all that long ago in some of our memories that you could buy a boat across the street from that place, kind of kitty corner. And I think there is some value, especially being a river city and having a business that services boats and motors and things like that. I'm sure there are many customers that would be impacted by this business being shut down or having to move. I agree that we have to follow kind of the direction... I agree that we have to follow kind of the direction of our vision for that part of the city, so I, I don't quarrel with that at all. But I'm wondering if, I guess the first thing I'd, I'd wonder is, where is the nearest place in which it would be completely legal to have a boat repair shop, a boat and motor repair shop? Because we've got some space in this city that maybe we could work at moving this business to, if we're saying to them right now, you got to shut down because you can't be in that exact spot. Has staff given that any thought?
Yes.
Your Honor and Councilmember Johnson, this would fall under the category of major recreational repair, and that is allowed in the general commercial district as well as the industrial district.
Okay. So, for example, some of that property that's along, say Foley and Coon Rapids Boulevard in, in that region, there's some, if I remember right, some general industrial over in that area, some general commercial?
Yeah, I believe there is along Foley Boulevard between Coon Rapids Boulevard and East River Road.
So, my, my point is, you know, I'm probably going to vote to adopt the recommendation of our Planning Commission, which is a denial, but I agree with Councilmembers Wells and, and Manning, that there ought to be a place that we can go here that doesn't necessarily mean we're trying to run this business out of town, because I think they do provide a valuable service for the community. And frankly, I like to keep businesses that are up and running in the city whenever we get a chance to do that. If that can be done, great. So...
I agree where they're at isn't the right spot, and there seems to be a need. I mean, we've got the river, we've got the recreational, I mean, and obviously people are bringing their stuff there because there's boats there. The challenge has been, it's been the creep. I mean, it started out with a few and a few, and now, and then the last one was that huge one that's been facing west, and every time I drive by, I'm thinking, how long is that going to be there? So, I, I think that was kind of the challenge, is just the creep, and, and there's so much outdoor storage now. If, if we had a way to not harm them, because I think they provided service, I would love to encourage them to stay in town somewhere. I mean, if, if we could give them even a year, I mean, it wouldn't bother me to give them a, the minimum of six months, it wouldn't bother me to give them until, you know, whenever. But I, I mean, but a date, a date certain. Because it's going to be a lot of work to move that business, and try and find another facility that's affordable, so...
Your Honor, any other thing is, it's going to be, you know, it's going to take some time to re-rent that space too. I don't want to hurt on that end either. So, you know, whatever time we can give them, I think would be good.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Counselor Clinton, then Counselor Johnson.
I'm just wondering, because they are non-conforming now, you know, there's other establishments that we limit the amount of outdoor vehicles they have. Even, I mean, if we were to give them six months, could we, could we limit how many vehicles are outside at any one time? Or because it's non-conforming, we can't do anything?
Well, just to be clear, they're not non-conforming. They never were non, they never were conforming.
Right, right.
For a lack of a better word, illegal. And I don't mean to, I guess I do mean it, the true meaning of what it is. So, it's a bit hard for us to regulate something that isn't allowed in the first place. So, like I said, staff I believe would be willing to work. Again, I don't know what that reasonable timeframe is. I think council is giving us direction as to what that reasonable timeframe is. And like I said, I don't know what conversations that we've had with Coon Rapids Marine. I think their belief has been, or what their track has been to this point, is try to get an ordinance change. And so now that, if that's not a reality for them, then we can get into the next tract of, of having them, try to get them into a new location, and hopefully one here in Coon Rapids, if that works out.
Counselor Demmer, and then Johnson, and then Clinton.
I just wanted to clarify, I think more important from what I'm hearing than the timeframe, is that staff works to help find a new home. But that's, if you can find a new home in three months and, and everything works out, great. If it's going to take longer, then set a timeframe that helps you find a new home, I think is what I'm hearing.
Counselor?
As a matter of following the law and proper procedure, Mr. Brody, is there a timeframe within which this council must act based on the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Yes. I think there's 120-day rule that we're, we're, I guess we're not running up against, but I think it's in the end of April that the council has to make a decision, and either we have to deny the, or uphold the recommendation from Planning Commission, or adopt an ordinance that would allow the use.
So, if we got, if that 120 days were to run, then what kind of a legal position would we?
We'd be in a position where we've essentially granted the request, and we'd have to, I don't know what it actually would look like, because we're supposed to have created an ordinance, but we would have to allow the use. We wouldn't have an ordinance that would allow it, but it would be at that point permitted.
Unless we reach an agreement with the owner-operator to forego that deadline?
Correct. Or if you, if you act tonight and deny it, that, we've met the 120-day requirement, because we've act, we've, the council's made a final decision on the application from the, from Coon Rapids Marine. So, that obviously would satisfy the rule as well. Or if we did adopt an ordinance, we could probably have that adopted by the 129, 120-day deadline, or I'm certain that Coon Rapids Marine would probably agree to an extension of that if they knew an ordinance was coming.
I'm going to make a kind of a weird recommendation to the council. I don't mean to step in front of you, but I, what I'm leaning toward recommending is upholding the Planning Commission's recommendation, which would be a denial of their ordinance, but giving staff direction not to commence any enforcement action on violation for a period of time that the council can agree upon, and then getting a report back from staff as to what they've been able to work with. That's kind of what I'm thinking is a procedure to go forward.
Counselor Johnson?
For, for me, it's, it's not as much about fixing the boats and motors, it's about the outdoor storage, the outdoor storage that's not, it's on grass, it's all over. And, and to me, if we can, you know, if we maybe wait or table and say, okay, we've got a little bit of wiggle room to the 120 days, and look at, is there a way that it, something like that could be in an ordinance? But you would have to have no outdoor storage, and it would have to be on improved surfaces, because we don't allow people in their yards to have boats, you know, on, on improved surfaces. And so, we don't want that on the Boulevard. So, to me, I'm more supportive of upholding the Planning Commission denial, because I don't see a way forward that you can actually do that business without that kind of storage. And Coon Rapids Boulevard is not the place for it.
Your Honor?
Counselor Clinton?
I'm going to make a motion to deny the request to amend the change and allow the current business to take up to six months to move. Not that I would prefer that, but I see the way the rest of the council is going. And in six months' time, end of the summer is about the time when boats have been out, and it's before they come into storage for the, for the winter, so I think that timing would be good. Give them six months.
That'll put you right at about Labor Day.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. A motion to uphold the denial and allow the current business to take up to six months to move. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Counselor Clinton?
I'll bring us up a discussion. I also, while I think it's great that we encourage your staff to work with them in trying to find some new place, I also want to caution that, because we don't own the building and have to move them, that our, our staff time might be very limited as to what they can do, and what they can provide, while they can help, and, you know, let them know what we know is available in the city. I don't want it to think that it's their job that they have to find a place for them to go.
Your Honor?
Counselor Manning?
I'd just like to point out, though, that if they do find a place, sometimes they negotiate a build-out on that place. And that makes it very difficult to find out when, to know when that build-out is going to be done. So, I'm hoping that, even if we do have the six-month limit, if they've found a place and they need a little extra time, we can consider it at that time, can't we?
I think staff's going to use some discretion, I think, in this matter, that if that's the case, I mean, we've got a, they've got a building, and they've got a move-in date, and it happens to be the middle, the beginning of October, I, I think staff's going to be pleased that that's occurring, and I think the council's going to be pleased, and we're not going to be out there issuing citations, or things of that nature, or taking some sort of code enforcement activity, knowing that they're moving.
I'd rather not give them the hard six months. I'd rather staff kind of work with a little discretion, and if all of a sudden, if all the boats that are there in storage clean up, and all of a sudden, it's just down to a few, and it's not so overwhelming that if it takes them until October or November or something, get through Labor Day.
I kind of agree with you. The indefiniteness, I think, actually works to the benefit of everybody in the situation, because it's, you know, there's some incentive to get going on, you know, looking for a new place, rather than waiting till the end. And, and there's also some practical benefit to the city. So, I, I guess I would favor a more indefinite period, and, and look forward to a periodic report from staff and a workshop on kind of where we stand on things, and then we'll take it from there. That would be my preference.
Six months would be kind of the general, you know, that's kind of what we're looking for, but it takes longer.
Counselor Clinton?
I'm also kind of worried, though, while, yes, if they clean it up, and it's nice, and, and we can stand it, and we can work with them, what about the opposite? I mean, if we're, we're giving them six months now, and they've got, you know, 10 huge boats out there all sitting on the grass, we have to also have some way of...
So, that's... So, maybe let's take out the six months, let's let staff use their best judgment, and, and they kind of know that our guideline is we'd like them out this year.
Do you need something specific? You don't have a date.
Your motion, if you want to amend it.
Well, I'm looking at our attorney, and he's thinking, ah, maybe that's not going to work.
I, I see both sides of the argument, obviously, as a, as a lawyer. And I like the idea of sort of a, a drop-dead date, or at least a semi-drop-dead date of, of six months. I mean, it does give something definite. It gives those guys some idea of when they know they've got to be out of there, that they've got to be decreasing the activity, not increasing the activity. It makes it somewhat difficult to do code enforcement if they up it sort of over these next three months, because, well, we've kind of given them some time, and maybe part of that is they got up for a little bit while they look for a new spot, they're continuing their business. To me, if we say, hey, you've got six months, we kind of let them go alone, or leave them alone during that period, other than trying to, if we can't help them move out, then I think that kind of gives us, and I think it gives them too, an idea of, of where we're at, and, and that kind of a deadline of when they need to, to move out. And it makes sense from a seasonal standpoint, as Councilmember Johnson pointed out, that it's going to be the end of their season, and kind of the beginning of the, of the storage season. So, to me, it makes sense the way the original motion was, was put together, that I think that provides the best guidance to all parties involved.
Okay. So, we're, we're upholding the denial and allow the current owners to take up to six months, with staff using some discretion on that. Right? Okay. Any more discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we're up to item number two on our agenda. Representative Scott, Senator Abler, would you like to stop up here?
Is there anybody here for the last one?
We weren't sure how long this meeting was going to go, so we appreciate you coming down earlier from Andover. How are things at the Andover City Council this evening?
Oh, well, they're, oh, I'm Representative Peggy Scott. I represent a portion of Coon Rapids from about 121st North. And so, we, we were just at the city of Andover, and things are going swimmingly there, as they might say, but no, it's a, it's a fine city, and I've made a little bit of a, an introduction, and just talked to them a little bit about what we see coming forward in this session, and so they're on board. They're going to actually have a bonding project up there, most likely. Some of you know, along Hanson, there's a, there was a big dump there, and there's a holding tank there that the MPCA has on their list to be dealt with, and it's, it does need to be dealt with. So, this is, you know, I've been in the legislature going on eight years now, and I've never had a bonding request from the city of Andover, so this is something new to me. But, no, it's a pleasure to serve, and as I said, over in Andover, it was fun to be out at caucuses last night and see so many of our neighbors, and help people find the right precinct to go to, and had to turn a few people away that came to the middle school, Coon Rapids Middle School, because they said, this is always where I caucus. Well, last night, it had changed, and they were supposed to be at Champlin Bark High School. So, that was not always the, the best news to have to give, but hopefully they made it over there, too, to caucus with their, with their neighbors over there. Just want to address a couple of things, is when you had the bonding tour here this fall or summer, I think, for the project on Hanson there with the railroad tracks, we'll be trying to get that in the bonding bill. I think that's, it's on the governor's priority list, so I, I've, I'm caught, what do you say, cautiously optimistic that it'll make it into the bonding bill. And it's a, it's a public safety infrastructure project, it needs to, it needs to be addressed. So, there's that. Some of the things that I'm working on personally, I'm working on body camera legislation. Some cities and jurisdictions already have body cameras, some are considering having them, police worn body cameras, and so I'm trying to find resolution with all the moving parts on a policy for that. And, you know, I guess, other than that, there's some Met Council things we're working on that would affect the city here, but other than that, I would just open up to questions. If you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them. Many of the council.
I'll be fascinated to see how that body camera legislation goes, because I never knew how many moving parts there were until I talked to Chief Wise about it.
Yeah.
And you're going, oh, Mike, this isn't, this is not a simple thing.
No, no. In fact, before I came here tonight, I was reading an informational piece that the courts use, that judges use on Fourth Amendment issues. And so, because that was one of my main concerns with the body camera thing, is should, should officers have those on inside people's homes, especially if people don't want them on? And is it the equivalent of a search warrant to be capturing some of that? So, those are some of the concerns we have, and should that data be public or private, and a whole myriad of things. So, it's, it's a, it's a very complicated issue, so...
How many people are you willing to allocate to redacting faces to the, for the public requests?
Right, right, right. And, I mean, the software and the technology is improving on that, so it's becoming easier and easier to do. There's such thing as a facial recognition tech, some technology, so that if you have a, you know, a 15-minute episode, you can, you can highlight on one person's face to redact, and it'll redact that same face throughout the, throughout the course of that 15-minute tape. So, it's come a long way.
Sure.
But, yeah, technology is interesting. Yeah. But I just want to say, too, that for the people of the city of Coon Rapids, please contact me if there's anything that I can do for them. I want to be available, I'm very accessible, and I meet at local coffee shops, rather than making people come down to St. Paul, especially when we're in session. So, I'm glad to, I'm very proud to represent Coon Rapids, and want to be of service to the folks here.
Excellent. We got a question from Councilwoman?
Well, either one of you. I'm just wondering, is there any kind of legislation coming up with mental health? You know, this is, this area, we've been fighting for a long time with taking out the ment, especially the adolescent mental health units. You know, we don't have any in the hospitals anymore locally, and is there any kind of work being done towards increased funding for that kind of thing?
You know, last year was a budget year, but I will turn that over to the human services expert, he is right here, Senator, Senator Abler, so I would, I would let him answer that question. If you don't have any other questions for me, I'll just let him take over. That's okay? Thank you.
Senator Scott, thank you. Senator Abler, congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. How exciting. I'm excited to be back, and I, I think I still have like 25 or 30 seconds left from my last time I was here, and you said that didn't, didn't carry over, but I remember. And if you remember Senator Jungbar, I got done early, we were at a presentation... We were at a presentation together. I used, I had some extra time left and he said, can I have Jim's time? So that's one of the tricks, I guess. But I'm pleased to be here and Andover sends our greetings. They did bring you up specifically and they're so happy to be your neighbor. They just, they just feel blessed to have you at their southern tip down here. Anyway. Anyway, so there's a lot of things going on and I'm on three committees. We're still waiting for the memo to get done. Right now I have no committees. They all have to be retransferred from Brandon Peterson. But it's likely I'll be on the Health Human Services Finance Committee, Higher Ed, which is useful for Nook Ramsey and Elk Tech, and then Local Government. And so that'll be a new switch for me. And so if you need any cool laws passed, we can just take all, take care of all those, whatever needs you might have. And so I know the Met Council is always under discussion and eighteen years ago when I first got in office, we discussed Met Council reform and it hasn't been reformed at all. So if there's, if you have ideas that might actually become law, I think that we're eager about that. The mental health thing, I don't know the specifics. I know last year a lot of mental health got done, a lot of mental health efforts. And the, and Elk Treatment Center, which is not on your turf, but many of your citizens work there and you, a lot of, it's a very important regional thing for us, is going to be worked on. There's troubles there with the twenty, to the chief, twenty-four, the forty-eight hour rule where you can move people out of jail into the Elk Treatment Center and there's apparently a demand for that kind of service. But they come in unevaluated, untreated, and they're really dangerous. And so maybe these F me, just the workers there have to try to contend with that. So it's, it's really a, it's as complicated as the body cameras thing. You know, and, and so I don't know, maybe that's a new, new career choice for people. You could be a facial redactor, you know, that'd be fun to talk about that at parties perhaps, you know. And so there's been a lot of debate about the money. I was the chairman when there was a big deficit and in those times, you were a part of that. People begged not to be cut. Please, just leave us alone, let us have, keep what we have. And then if there's some kind of money, it resembles, you know, people's, little kids going for the, I want my dollar for something and, and, but, you know, the things that you're needing are pretty important. And in the time, I coined the phrase essential, important, and nice. And everybody wanted to be essential, even the things that were just kind of cute. But these crossings and, you know, the, our independence, interdependence, independence from foreign oil, which those tracks give us, also caused some challenges. So we're united on working on that, so. And this one also, for one other comment, one of the best things we get to do in office, and I'm sure that you as council members have a similar pleasure, but you have a much narrower depth of staff to try to find, actually you call and people pick up the phone. You have some people, that's their job to say hello. And at the state, we have helplines and deep, deep bureaucracies. And if you need something sorted out through the Department of Human Services or Admin or Labor or somewhere, that's what we do the best. We are, we have people who work for us. We might know somebody who works at a desk. We'll find you a live voice who actually can resolve your thing. Doesn't require law, just requires sometimes one phone call and the matter is, is put to rest. And so rather than give a lot of phone numbers, I'll just give people two websites they can look up. One is senate.mn, that's the Senate website, and you'll scroll down and find my name on there. And then house.mn is Representative Scott's name on there. And we love to have people call us. And let me tell you, the people of Coon Rapids and suburban families in general hardly ever call. So when they do, it's really important and we're on it and we can make a real difference for that. So government really is us. And last night with the hundreds of thousands of people who showed up to vote for the president of their choice and be involved in their particular party, really show what government can be when it works well. And so we're happy to be part of that. And again, it's a pleasure to serve and I burned up way more than my thirty seconds, Mr. Mayor.
You're an elected senator, you get to actually take your time now. I hate to say that, but.
It's not a filibuster.
It's not a filibuster, though, no. Counselor Manning?
Couple of questions, Senator.
Yes.
One is, what's the latest projection for surplus? And two, speaking for all the little kids on the council here, increase in the local government aid this year.
I think the amount available.
We think that's essential.
Yeah, essential. I couldn't agree more. And if reelected, I will, I will continue to agree. Nine hundred million, I believe, is the number. And as you have, if you read the B section, and for the people at home, read the B section of either paper, that's where the news about the state government and local government things that go on. And it does affect you every day, the things that, between hazardous sites and train crossings and school funding and local government aid and so on. And so the good news is, is that there's discussion about it. The bad news is it's set empty to be a political debate. And Senator Bach is a big fan of, of local government aid. So I bet the Senate will be all over that. And the House is concerned about other kinds of ways to help, and maybe I'll see what Senator Scott thinks about what the House might do. I know there's a push from some of the members there, the more greater Minnesota members, to work on that as well. There's also been a push that I think makes some sense is that it should be spent on things that are truly essential. And I think in Coon Rapids, that would be no problem because you're a pretty frugal city and you are careful what you buy. Other cities, in my opinion, are not quite as careful with what they spend their money on. And the LGA in its inception wasn't meant to be to help a property poor, modest income area be able to support the essentials of lined up at the table there, police, fire, et cetera. And so that's the debate that goes on. There's always a push to reform. But I'll make sure that, and then maybe staff can give me an idea what, not tonight, but what sort of interests they have and what they might like, and so I can lobby on behalf of that.
Senator Abler, while you're here, we just have, Representative Scott, we just have two things here, of course. You mentioned the Hanson Bridge over the rail, at the great crossing. The other thing is, we would still have to get those, get those third lanes on Highway 10 because that would help not only Coon Rapids, it would help Andover, Oak Grove, all parts north and west. And the latest engineering suggestion was like less than thirteen million dollars because if they only go as far as Round Lake Boulevard, because it's not all the engineering beyond that. So if, if you could encourage those as they come by your desk.
And that's about what the third lane up to, from Eagerit to Hanson costs.
Third lanes, oh, I don't know what.
That was about thirteen, twelve, thirteen million, I think, as well.
Yeah, so we're looking at from now, from Hanson to get it out to Round Lake Boulevard. And that looks, yeah.
And I can bring you good news of great cooperation. The city of Andover also is eager to help you get that third lane so that people, so people don't go to Andover so much. They do like having people drive through, but not just the passersby that want to go to Ramsey, apparently. But also there's great agreement and the good news, and Representative Newton is also keenly interested in that and we're, we're all in agreement on that. And the nice thing about Armstrong being completed, so they got their crossing, anyway, is that that puts a kind of a finite end to it. So people think, when is it going to stop? You know, is it Elk River, Big Lake? And so the Armstrong thing, really, if you get that, if you get it infilled from there with the third lane and then fixing up a couple of the other intersections, you've got a pretty workable expressway or at least a higher capacity road. I think just, you know, the council, just some more entrepreneurial ideas, you know, on those Friday afternoons when people are backed up into Coon Rapids, you might want to set up some like road vendors along the freeway and let them buy some cold drinks and, you know, ice creams. That would require probably council action, which is probably beyond the scope of my talk, so. Thank you.
I think we're done.
Go away. Just wait. I'm going to push this, get on you a little bit more about the whole mental health issue thing. Because I don't think there is anything on the horizon right now, maybe you guys can be the beginning of it. But it's for the adolescent mental health, you know, Mercy Hospital used to have a adolescent unit, it doesn't have it anymore. Unity doesn't have it anymore. Now if we have kids in high school or younger age that need mental health, any kinds of help, it's, you know, St. Paul, Duluth, or Rochester that they're shipping these kids to for hospital stays and we really do need something more local.
There's a place in Maple Grove, is it called Prairie Care? There's a, with some beds there, I know. And I'm not trying to dodge it, I just didn't know the specific interest you had in it and I didn't want to tie up council time with all that, but I'm eager to talk about it. But I can, I was just talking to District 11. They have thirty-one licensed professional counselor types there that are intervention level. I think each school has one. So if there's thirty-one, however many schools, maybe Councilmember Manning, you remember how many schools a district has, but there's thirty-one in the district where before they had almost none. And so they're trying to deal with that. That was in the wake of all those suicides and, and some of the.
That's where the problem is. We have that, but then where do they bring these kids? There's no place local to bring them.
Yeah.
That's the issue, yeah.
That would be essential. So we'll, we'll take that offline, but I'm, but I'm on that committee and keenly interested in that, so.
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I just wanted to say to Representative Scott, I really appreciate the work you're doing on the body camera issue. I was at a CLE speaking today with John Lesch, who I know you've worked with on that issue a lot, and it is very complicated. I'm a prosecutor. Our city has city prosecutors and our police department. It's the wave of the future. I think it's a good thing for the criminal justice system, but how this all sorts out is so very important. So thank you for spending the time and the energy on that.
Thank you.
There is a strange statute, you know, so many of the laws that apply to this, to these kinds of things are in various different places all over our codes. And there's a particular statute, and I'm not going to take any time on it, but it relates to squad videos and the admissibility of squad videos, and it's 634.36. And I can talk to you about it more later, but I wanted to call your attention to it right now. And I think if there could be a small change to that to include body camera footage, that would be helpful for those police officers and prosecutors who are involved in having to deal with that evidence in court.
Okay.
And, but again, it's huge work and I think it's ironic that I think, you know, the public doesn't really realize how much police officers and prosecutors are looking forward to this technology being a part of our daily work.
Very good.
Thanks.
Glad to talk to you about that in more detail, too.
Happy to do it more later.
So it's always good to get on-the-street practical feedback on some of that and what it would look like if it were implemented, so thank you.
Representative Scott, Senator Abler, thank you for coming by.
Thank you for having us.
All right, from item two to item eleven on the agenda, consider a request for two additional regular part-time positions at CTN. Oh, that was our old Chief Piper, wasn't it? Mr. Demmer, you want to cover anything else? I mean, there's a pretty good description on what they're trying to do here, but it looks like it's forty-five thousand dollars, we're looking at increasing the 2016 budget for this. And what is the potential to recapture some of that and the additional fees to we, no?
Yes, so the, thank you, Mayor and Council. The impetus to this really is sort of victim of our own success a little bit at CTN Studios with regard to their production services. And so as they have taken on more and more projects, have found more need for sort of regular part-time hours. And Eric Strauss, the CTN Station Manager, anticipates a number of even new contracts as we go forward into spring and summer. They're just finishing up Snowcross. They're anticipating a potential for some work with the St. Paul Saints again this summer, so many things like that. And we didn't anticipate that from a budget perspective, so we didn't include additional part-time positions, though these positions would be covered by both the increase in revenue we've received over the last year or so and then anticipating new revenue. And as Eric and I have talked about, it's pretty well understood to the extent that we don't realize those additional revenues, you know, we're not going to go in the hole because of these additional positions. So the intent is really to sort of get them, based on the budget, we're still working out some of the details exactly of how these positions will come together, but since we weren't meeting until March 22nd, we work to just sort of get them established now. And specific revenue projections, I guess I don't have the 2016 information. I do know they were maybe forty thousand, fifty thousand or so over what they expected in 2015, so we can sort of monitor that, I think, as we go forward.
Counselor Gadsler.
So when we're saying regular part-time, is that up to thirty hours?
It'd be up to twenty-eight hours a week per position, correct. So they'd be non-benefit, benefited positions with some flexibility built into it, sort of on average twenty-eight hours, except for some reason one week there was only, with any of these positions, the potential that they only needed twenty hours of work, that's all that person would work that week.
Your Honor.
Counselor, move Resolution Number 16-35.
Motion by Wells, seconded by Demmer. Improve Resolution Number 16-35, amending the budget for the Public Communications Fund for additional part-time staff. Discussion? Counselor Gadsler.
You know, I'm, I'm going to support this. I just, I just think it's not setting a very good precedent that we're only in the third month of the year and we're already making changes. And especially to hear you say, you know, anticipated these increases over, you know, the work we've been doing the last couple of years, it seems like something that should have been caught in the budget process, that we knew, you know, a new franchise was coming in, we knew we were going to go to HD, we knew all these things we were going to do. And I just, I really don't like having to increase things after we've already approved the budget. And so I just want to put that out there, that maybe we have to do a better job of foreseeing some things in the future when we go the next go-around.
Councilmember Clinton, Council, I think in this, in this case, since they're an enterprise-based fund and we don't always know exactly what those contracts are going to be, this isn't necessarily being, although we have the potential for new revenue from the additional franchise with CenturyLink, that's not increasing the workload. The HD and this, those things aren't increasing the workload. What's increasing the workload there are these, sort of thinking of them almost as private business contracts that we're getting. And so those ebb and flow with the business that's available, just like with any other business. But we've seen, though, is just kind of a continual increase in that. And I would say it's one of those things that we don't want to sort of over-anticipate revenues for the, for the sake of the budget purpose and sort of build in positions that later than we just sort of don't, we could just build them in and then not hire them. I think in this case, it's a, at least in my philosophy with CTN and maybe some of the other enterprise funds, we do already have a lot of flexibility around the types of seasonal people we hire, variable hour positions we hire. We hire those all the time based on need. In this case, Eric's preference is really that we have some regular part-time people and so that sort of has triggered, well, we don't have that established in budget, so we, we would need to do that, but it has to have that offsetting revenue going forward to make that work from their perspective, so.
You have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We're now at the open mic portion of the meeting. And I'll read the open mic instructions. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Personal attacks are prohibited, just in case you're thinking about doing that. Open mic is not a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only, and questions from council will be for clarification only. If necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker. There.
Anything illegal?
You actually don't have to lean into it, it'll hear you when you're standing straight up.
Oh, good, all right, thanks. Leanne Mortensen, 11220 Olive Street, Northwest, Coon Rapids. Mayor, City Council, I'd really like to thank all of you tonight for updating the tobacco ordinance to state law. And I'd also like to urge the council to prohibit the use of e-cigarettes where smoking is prohibited. These changes will protect our clean indoor air. Prohibiting the use of e-cigarettes where smoking is prohibited in Coon Rapids will uphold our standard of clean indoor air. Since workplaces became smoke-free in 2007, clean indoor air has become the standard that Minnesotans expect and support. In fact, seventy-nine percent of Minnesotans support expanding protections to protect, to prohibit e-cigarette use in indoor public places. Studies have found, and I think that Wade, oh, no, this is not that one, but I'll get to that one, Councilmember Demmer. Studies have found that e- not that one, but I'll get to that one, Councilmember Demmer. Studies have found that e-cigarette vapor contains nicotine, heavy metals, and other toxic compounds. There have been no long-term studies conducted on e-cigarettes. So the lasting impact on the health of users or those exposed to second-hand vapor is unknown. And I think that's what Councilmember Demmer was getting at. And I think that's very much a concern coming from the public health world, that we don't know how that's going to affect people. We've done a lot of work. We've done a lot of great work with the Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act. We don't want to go backwards. There's other businesses, organizations, and cities and counties that have protected the clean indoor air in their communities by restricting e-cigarette use where smoking is restricted, including 27 cities, including Elk River to the north, 16 counties, and some businesses, Target Field, Target Center, Buffalo Wild Wings, and Delta Airlines. So people are making those decisions, short of having the state doing it themselves. So obviously, we know local control. We can make those decisions. We know that e-cigarettes are new and popular, especially with young people. When my daughter was at Blaine High School and came home one day and said that there was a kid smoking in class next to her, and I was like, "Really?" And then figured out it was an e-cigarette and called the school. And the school's like, "Yeah, we got to figure this out." Yeah, we do. We all have to figure this out. One of the things to remember is that e-cigarettes are often sold in candy flavors. Actually, often, most of them, like 150 to 200 different flavors, including gummy bear, cotton candy, raspberry, strawberry. They're not aiming it at us folks. They're aiming it at the kids. The U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recently showed an increase in youth use from 2011 to 2012. Tobacco use is going down. But unfortunately, with e-cigarette use, it's going up. The 2014 Minnesota Youth Tobacco Survey showed that over 1 in 4, so almost 30%, 28, 4% of Minnesota high school students have tried an e-cigarette. E-cigarettes may be introducing addictive nicotine to young people who would not have otherwise tried conventional tobacco products. Again, I don't think we want to go backwards.
Are we close to the end? It's been three minutes.
Oh, yeah. And, okay, wait, okay. And a recent study showed that youth exposure to television e-cigarette advertisements increased more than 250% from 2011 to 2013. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else here for open mic this evening? All right. With that, we'll close open mic. We don't have any reports on previous open mics. And we are to other business. Other business council?
I happen to know that if Mr. Anderson was here tonight from the golf course, he would be very excited to tell us that the golf driving range opened up a week ago Saturday, and that the executive course will be opening this Thursday, and that the championship course will open sometime in the next two weeks. So he's pretty excited this would be, if they could make it by the 12th, it would be the earliest opening they've ever experienced.
You have now guaranteed a new snowfall.
So be it.
Food's still great, and the play is wonderful.
I would just ask people to please use common sense. And if their ball goes out on one of the ponds, don't go to get it.
All right. And then another important piece of business is our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Tuesday, March 22nd. It will not be the third Tuesday this month. It will be the fourth Tuesday. It will be March 22nd. So that's all the business I've got. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Stammel?
You mentioned the one thing I was going to say.
All right. Perfect. Stole your thunder.
No, that's good.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to be adjourned by Gazzler, second by Wells, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.